Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the Tuesday, April 24th, 2018 City of Gardner, Kansas Planning Commission meeting to order. Everyone will please rise and state the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and this new republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now move into roll calls, starting on my right.
Brady here. Boden here. Freeman here.
Mater here.
Austin here. Gardner higher here.
Quorum is present. Moving on to the consent agenda. All matters listed within the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If separate discussion is desired on an item from either the planning commission or from the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. Is there any item any member of the public would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Any item any member of the commission would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved. Sorry.
We have a motion made by Boden with a second by Freeman that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Regular agenda item number one, Gardner Justice Center, southwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight. Item A, PDP-18-03, hold a public hearing and consider a preliminary development plan for 15.247 acres. We'll do this item first and then move on to item B. Good evening. Michelle?
Thank you, ma'am chairwoman. Members of the planning commission, my name is Michelle Cricks, planner with the City of Gardner. And this evening, I'm pleased to present the Gardner Justice Center preliminary development plan and then later I'll be following up with the final plan for the Justice Center. So here on your screen is the location of the 15.247 acres currently owned by the City of Gardner slated for part of that for being the Justice Center. It is located in northeast part of the city adjacent to Moonlight Road and is between University Drive and 167th Street. New Century Airport will be to the east across Moonlight and then of course we've got the University Park to the north. There's additional vacant land to the west and then to the south will be residential with Genesis Creek Estates, Moonlight Gardens, and Moonlight Ridge to the south of 167th. So the picture in front of you is going to give a general layout of the entire kind of a photograph visual of the site. The picture in front of you is going to be from the south from 167th Street looking north. To the right is going to be the Gardner Church of the Nazarene. You can see kind of a tree line there. So it just kind of shows you that this has been more cultivated land. There's been no development on it. This is a shot from the site from the north from University Drive looking straight south where you can see the residential. And then this is looking to the south and east towards the general location of the proposed Justice Center. For the entire site here, I pulled up what the utilities are existing around the site. In the red and in is going to be the electrical and it's notated as dash lines to show that those are all overhead lines. There is greens, the sewers available just south of 167th Street and then water is available along University Drive and Moonlight and a little bit along 167th Street as well. Surrounding zoning for this site, this site is currently zone CP2. We are not changing the zoning designation of this 15 acre site. It will remain the CP2, which is a planned general business district. So we've got the Church of the Nazarene there in the corner in A as the light green, which is the agriculture. To the north, north of University Drive, you may remember that we've had recent rezoning applications for cottages at University Park to change that zoning to an RP3 zoning designation down by University Drive. And then just last month, we had the R3 zoning change, which was approved by city council just last week to R3. Then we have CP2 with the planned general business just to the west of the site, general or plan, excuse me, commercial office, single-family residential garden apartment and more business to the south. And then New Century Air Center to the west, or excuse me, east of Moonlight. So in front of you here is the snapshot from the Gardner Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. You're going to see here that the site is highlighted in yellow and it is designated on the Comprehensive Land Use Map as low-density residential. It is surrounded by public and semi-public use with the church, more low-density residential, light industrial office park to the east, and some higher-density residential down to the south across 167th Street. The proposed use of this site is going to be public and semi-public use with the city facilities on it. So the Gardner Land Development Code defines public and semi-public uses as land uses which include governmental, educational, and religious land uses. Governmental uses include offices, public safety uses, public surface agencies, and other uses that are both government-owned and relate to the operation of the city. The Gardner Land Development Code also notes that the public and semi-public uses promote special purpose land uses that provide broader community benefits. And although the Land Development Code does not specify what typical zoning district this use is generally applied in, it is allowed in all zoning districts since this use does provide a public benefit. And in this case, tonight would be the Justice Center would be providing a public benefit. So tonight, the request tonight is a revised preliminary plan on 15.247 acres and we'll be following it up with a final development plan for the Gardner Justice Center. So the Justice Center proposes to be located in the northeast portion of the city adjacent to Moonlight Road and New Century, which I've already stated. And of course, we've had the recent applications in this area the last couple months with the cottages of University Park, which is a multi-density residential with multiple zoning districts and multiple building types. And then we have the Garden Walk of Gardner or University Park Edition, which is at nine plus acres directly north of this site that was recently rezoned to R3. So in front of you is the original preliminary development plan that was approved in 2003. You'll notice the area that is part of the city subject site for revised preliminary plan is highlighted in red down at the bottom right of the screen. And you'll notice that originally this area was planned for large expansive parking and parcel buildings along University Drive along Moonlight and then there was another parcel building down by 167th Street. The PDP tonight is only going to be addressing that area highlighted and red in front of So the slide in front of you is the full preliminary development plan on that 15.247 acres, which will of course, if approved, will replace the preliminary development plan that you just saw with that area highlighted in red. You'll notice on the plan that the Justice Center, which will be part of the final development plan, is located at the very northeast part of the site and you'll notice that the remaining approximate 10 acres is vacant to the west of that site. And this is because at this time, the city does not have any plans on what has been determined to be the best use for the remainder of that site. However, when the city does determine what the best use will be for that site, a revised preliminary plan will be presented to the planning commission and it'll be part of a public hearing. So because this is a planned district, the code does allow departures from standards of the code or deviations, which is to encourage innovation development, unique and distinctive places, inefficient uses of land, buildings, and infrastructures. The proposed use of the land of the Gardner Justice Center is unique use and was determined by the applicant that some departures from the standards are going to be necessary to make this, to have the best use for the site and to provide a building that can best meet the needs of the city. So we'll go over the deviations here and I just want to note that all these deviations have been supported by staff, which are outlined in the staff report in more detail. I do want to note that these deviations will apply only to the Justice Center because future land use again has not been determined by the city. Any future deviations for projects or for future projects shall be determined by revised preliminary plan and of course will be subject to a public hearing at that time. So the first deviation I would talk about tonight is the deviation to the front yard setback. The Land Development Code requires the building type for the Justice Center, which is the prominent civic building type, which we'll go into more at the final development plan, to have a front yard setback of between 20 feet and 50 feet from that front property The applicant is requesting 110 feet from Moonlight Road. The applicant has stated that the reason for this request is due to the unique use of the building and the need for two separate entrances for public use and staff use. The public parking lot is proposed to be located directly adjacent to Moonlight Road while police and civilian staff parking is proposed to be located on the west side of the building, which will accommodate civilian staff, police staff, fleet vehicles, and provide access to the Sally Port. Also additionally, at the northeast corner of the building in front of the closest point of the building to Moonlight is a rain garden, which is proposed to manage stormwater runoff. This location was chosen for the bioswale or rain garden because it is one of the lowest points at that part of the site and it will allow for the natural runoff from the east side of the building and from the visitor parking lot. Due to the size of the rain garden needed to manage the amount of water, the building is proposed to be set back to provide an adequate space to efficiently manage that water runoff. So the second deviation requested is to the frontage type associated with the prominent civic building type proposed for the project. The applicant is requesting a deviation because of the unique use of the site. The Land Development Code provides for two preferred frontage types in relation to both building type and street type. In the Land Development Code, it is noted that the terrace frontage type, the neighborhood yard frontage type, and the buffer yard is preferred along a standard street type, which is what Moonlight is, is considered a standard street. The Land Development Code allows for either the terrace frontage type or neighborhood yard frontage design in relation to the prominent civic building. The terrace frontage type is intended to allow shallow open areas across multiple frontages along a block face, creating a continuous landscape element along the streetscape. It is intended to be 10 to 25 feet deep and with the front building line also line within that range. The terrace frontage design is intended for multiple buildings with a consistent setback distance to create a cohesive streetscape design for walkable neighborhood or retail center, incorporating seating, substantial landscape design, and buildings with small setback from the public realm, which this will not be consistent with the proposed context of this building. The neighborhood yard frontage design is intended to create a small to moderate open area, which is 25 to 35 feet deep with the front building line also within this range. It is intended to create a consistent landscaped area across several frontages along a block face with building setback at a common distance typically greater than other frontage types and where landscape designs and primary entrance features of buildings establish a relationship and transition to the streetscape. Like the terrace frontage type, the neighborhood yard frontage is intended in areas for more compact and walkable development and is not consistent with the proposed context of this public building. So the applicant is requesting a buffer edge frontage type. And the buffer edge frontage design requested is a preferred frontage type for the street type and is more appropriate for the proposed context for this project as appropriate for buildings which have a 25 feet or greater setback from the street. The buffer edge is intended to provide a concentrated and heavily landscaped and or burned area to separate the site and any potential impacts of the development from the streetscape. The concentrated landscaping accommodates a variety of building setbacks and eliminates the need for other design and performance standards associated with the frontage design. It should be noted, the applicant has complied with the depth of the frontage design in the zoning district, which is 12 feet in the CP2 district, for access widths and building The third deviation requested by the applicant is a deviation to the buffer landscape requirement along University Drive, which is on the north side of the building. The Land Development Code requires buffer landscaping on more intensely zoned property to provide a buffer and transition from more intense uses from less intense uses. Recent projects brought before the planning commission have included changes to the zoning designations, which are those lots that we talked about north of University Drive, and those zoning designations were changed to an RP3 and R3 respectively, which is a less intense zoning classification than the CP2 zoning district by the subject lot. So on the graphic in front of you, I've provided a part of the table from the Land Development Code, which requires the C3 zoning district to buffer from less intense or residential uses that the buffering requirements would be needed. So they would need one tree, either large, medium, or small, for every 40 linear feet of frontage. They would need one evergreen for every 30 linear feet along that frontage or a six-foot solid fence with plant materials on the outside. They would be required one shrub for every 10 linear feet of frontage and that buffer area would have to be at least 12 feet in depth. The applicant has provided three reasons for the deviation request. First, the screening a civic building is counterintuitive to the intention and placement close to University Drive. The width of the right away is 80 feet and therefore the distance of the building from the R3 zoning district north of University Drive is well over 100 feet when you start counting in setbacks. And the combination of required street trees, foundation plannings, and buffer landscape would pose a safety issue contrary to the crime prevention through environmental design standards, which that handbook was provided to me by the applicant, which I have included in the support for reference. Staff's opinion that the first two reasons were not as compelling as the third reason. The crime prevention through criminal design, or also called SEPTED, standards promote and prioritizes increased visibility in and around property to deter criminal activity. And due to the unique use of site for both the police and municipal court is in the best interest for police and court staff to reduce hiding areas and promote a safe environment. And staff reached out to the chief of police on this subject and he was very supportive of this deviation request by the applicant. The applicant did provide other required landscaping along the north property line adjacent to University Drive, such as all the required street trees, the foundation plannings adjacent to the building and parking lot landscaping. The intent of the Land Development Code is to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. And although the intent of landscape design is to create an attractive aesthetic environment in the city and preserve the values of adjacent properties as development occurs, we shouldn't do it in contrary to the overall intent of the Land Development Code. And the final deviation requested by the applicant addresses exceeding the maximum parking allowed by the land. The final deviation is requesting to exceed parking allowed within the Land Development Code. The LDC does require parking for service and office use. The LDC does not provide for parking standards for public and semi-public use as three spaces per 1,000 square feet of floor area of the building. The code also provides conditions where a project is allowed to exceed that amount by 20%, which in those cases is subject to strategies mitigating potential impacts of increased surface parking area. The applicant has proposed a maximum parking of 190 spaces for the Justice Center and that would be for the Justice Center only, which parking would be separated by visitor parking, which would be on the east side of the building, and staff and police parking, which would be on the west side. As I previously mentioned, the visitor parking would be then adjacent to the entrance along the east side from Moonlight. On the west side of the building, the parking is proposed for civilian staff, police staff, the fleet vehicles, and does account also for shift changes in the police shifts. Future parking is proposed along an internal drive to the south of the building. And for a building of the size of the Justice Center, the maximum parking allowed would be 119 spaces, which does include a 20% increase as I previously stated. The applicant has requested this deviation because of the unique use of the site, which does require a combination of civilians and city staff vehicles. A 2015 law enforcement feasibility study completed by the city stated that the parking needs for the Justice Center will be 193 spaces, which port both the current and future growth of the building and also accounts into changes in court schedule. Currently, municipal court is held three evenings a month and if you've ever been downtown, you will know that the parking is extremely taxed in downtown on those court nights. They average about a 250 case per night. According to the business services manager, who also oversees the courts division, it is anticipated the number of court dates needed will double by 2020, so they anticipate that three to go to six. And then based on growth of the city and projected increase in police staff, more monthly court dates will be necessary beyond 2020. So staff finds that the preliminary development plan is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan, that the development is consistent with the Gardner Land Development Code by proposing innovative design, and the proposed development promotes the site and building design and mitigates potential impacts on adjacent property owners. Therefore, staff is recommending the planning commission recommend approval of case PDP-1803, a preliminary development plan for the Gardner Justice Center, parcel ID CP94510000T0E1, located at the southwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight Road, to the governing body, based on a staff report dated April 24th, 2018, and a preliminary development plan dated April 11th, 2018.
Great. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
We'll now open the public hearing. All those who would like to speak on this matter, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the public record. This would be a great time if we have the applicant with us. Anything to add to the presentation would be great. We'll entertain those comments at this time.
Hi. Good afternoon. Andy Buckwitz, applicant with Trainer HL, 1040 Vermont Florence, Kansas. I'm here to answer any questions that the commission might have or inquiries or content or whatever you guys may have. I'm here to help answer any questions. So I'd like to thank the staff for their help in navigating the code and working with us and getting to a good place. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. Seeing nobody else coming forward, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Sorry.
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by Brady with a second by Boden. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. The public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, questions, comments? We'll just start on my right with Mr. Brady.
I might come back.
Okay. Commissioner Boden.
On the bioswale, I was wondering what the visibility of the bioswale would be from the street or from the parking lot?
From the parking lot, it would be pretty, you'd be able to see it pretty well. There'd be variations of plant heights, so some would be taller, some would be lower. It's only probably going to be three feet deep, so I think you should be able to see it, definitely with the southbound traffic from the street as well. The connection to the public right of way also is going to be providing an elevated sidewalk that will have the public and the public will be able to navigate kind of through the bioswale and in hopes maybe have some kind of interpretive signage or panel to inform the public of the stormwater treatment process and what's the intent of the design for that area.
Thank you.
Same with Austin?
Yeah, I guess going back to our staff, so we're revising, and this will sound repetitive from what I've asked in the past, but we're revising a portion of the CP2. So does that make the rest of the existing CP2 that we're not touching no longer able to be developed until they come back to us? Because it was planned as a full area, including this portion of land.
The current intent is for to, and the minute we'll go through the final development plan, would be to just finalize the part that the proposed building and parking area is on and the remainder of the property would remain basically vacant and agricultural property until such time as the city decides what to do with that property. There are various susundry uses proposed, everything from parks and rec property development to moving additional public facilities, consolidating other public facilities into this area, but we do not have the funds for such consolidation at this point in time, so the intent is to leave it vacant and maintain it mode or agricultural purposes until such time. And then it would have to come back to the council or the commission before any additional facilities could be constructed.
Right. I understand that through the portion of land that's undeveloped within this plan, but this was a part of a bigger preliminary development plan previously. And so now we've cut a piece out of that preliminary development plan so they can no longer build it as they had approval for. Do they now have to come, what do we do with that land now? Is it just sitting there and they have to resubmit on it or?
City property or other property?
Other property.
You're talking about the stuff that was discussed.
Zoning for all other properties that are outside of our preliminary are unaffected by our actions, so they would remain CP2 or as they are zoned. Some of it's CO, some of it's CP2. So we're not affecting the zoning or the changing the zoning on those properties outside of our boundaries.
But you're affecting the layout of that plant. The previous development plan showed all of this area as being a part of the parking and other items are part of that bigger CP2 law.
Correct. The original preliminary development plan, and Michelle, you'll have to help me with this, the preliminary development plan in 2003 is actually expired, isn't it?
Can I just have your help?
Yep.
So they didn't expire, the old ones, but I think it's obvious that since they sold off a piece of their property that they're going to understand that moving them forward with whatever their new plans are, they're going to have to revise their preliminary development.
I mean, as long as that's understood and that's a process, then that's fine. It just seems odd to me that we would have a portion of a land district change and not the other portion, but okay. I'm trying to figure out where these questions fall in tonight's process, so bear with me for a second. I think going towards the, starting to look at the deviations. So we're looking at giving them a deviation to utilize the buffer edge frontage type, which as defined, is intended to provide a concentrated and heavily landscaped and or burned open area to separate the site and any potential impacts from the development from the streetscape. But then we're trying to eliminate the buffer edge planting requirements thereby defeating the purpose of the buffer edge frontage type. edge frontage type. Am I reading this correctly?
Are you talking about the, the buffer plantings to separate the change in zoning districts that we're eliminating on the north side, and then the buffer frontage type along Moonlight?
So, the, the buffer edge frontage deviation is just along Moonlight and not along University?
That would be correct.
And then the buffer plantings deviation is along University and not along Moonlight?
Correct.
Okay. Good. As part of the preliminary development plan, we don't have the landscape in plan, but we were provided it for another part, and in looking at the landscape plan, it seems as though there's a much denser area of trees and evergreens existing in the south. So my question becomes that if we can leave it in place to the south, why can't we put it in place to the north as required by our standards?
Because along the north, it's, the, there's not much space between the right-of-way and to the building itself, so putting that heavily dense planning directly adjacent to the building, what the concern was, causing a greater safety potential with the staff and police, and that was the area of concern. That, that vegetative area between, along the property line between the Justice Center and the church is farther away, and there's a significant separation with the building and any entrances, and then that more dense vegetation.
One thing to add also, along the north, there are some utility easements as well, so trying to avoid putting plantings and trees within those easements also takes out some more space that we would have.
Help answer your question?
It, it does help answer the question, but it feels like maybe we're trying to force things into a spot that it doesn't fit in. Obviously, we want to maintain safety and we don't want to create issues for the safety of the building or the load of the building, but if we're saying that we can't comply with standards because there's not enough space between the road and the building, then are the standards wrong, or is the building too close to the road for the design standard that we're trying to follow?
Part of that might be some of the park accommodations, the added spots that they built in that, they put a big spot of that on the south, which pushes the development to the door. So there's other accommodations that have resulted in the way it lays within the plot.
Yeah.
Questions?
Not, not right now, but.
Okay. Mr. Gardenhire?
So, when I looked at, I'm not sure which sheet two of five, when I was looking at the terrain, it looks like the water runs to the west, or a majority of the water runs to the west, so why is the water retention area to the northeast?
The bio retention area on the northeast is picking up the surface lot for the visitor parking. There's kind of a ridge high point that, that divides the site into two, that's kind of right around that Sally Port Circle Drive. From that point, it kind of pitches and goes west, and then it also pitches and kind of goes east. So we're trying to pick up the east drainage, surface drain it into the bioswale, help treat the stormwater runoff, and then discharge it into your storm system.
So what about the water running to the west?
Water running to the west will be picked up in storm inlets and discharged through sheet flow across the remaining 10, 10 acres across into an opposed detention pond.
All right. And then with respect to parking, so when we have court days and we have 250 cases on the night, if I read it correctly, as proposed, we're proposing 164 spaces right now?
That would be correct. They're proposing 164 now with additional parking proposed along the internal drive south of the Sally Port for future needs.
Okay. If, but if we have a study now that says we need 193 spaces, why are we waiting? Just out of curiosity.
The, the 26 will be in with this. Is that, is that what he's referring to? The, yeah, so the, we, we will have the 190 stalls, the 26 that you see north of that south drive will, is proposing to get built at this time.
So it's not going to build it later?
Right. It, it currently, right now, it's proposing to be included.
Right. Okay. And those 250 cases are not all the same night, correct? Those are spread out over?
That's 250 per night.
Holy smokes. You got a law problem.
Sure, remember, you people cycle through, so.
Three times a week, we have 250 cases?
A month.
A month.
Three times per month.
Three times a month.
Right, and then talking with the business services manager, she's indicated that by 2020 that that will increase to six nights per month, and then they'll look at rearranging the schedule to having day, day court instead of evening court, and increasing the number of court, court cases, excuse me, court dates per month.
So what, just out of curiosity, what's the safe timeline on the structure itself then?
Construction is proposed to start later this summer, once we have all of our approvals in place, and I believe it's about a 12-month build time.
And will this structure serve as well five years from now, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, or is this just a stopgap measure? And secondly, can we build all of this at some point as our population increases?
I believe the, the building is supposed to accommodate 30 years of growth.
How many years?
30.
30, okay. The direction from, from council was to build a roof that might not per se, but tomorrow, so I genuinely trust that that's what they were tasked with in a common, I, that explicitly was the ring to it, yeah, with the gross studies of 30, 35,000 people over time, 25 to 30 years.
Other questions, commissioners? We don't have other questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
For the answering, we really appreciate the conversation and dialogue.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion on item 1A.
At the review of case number PDP-1803, preliminary development plan for the Gardner Justice Center, parcel ID CP-94510000T0E1, located on the southwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight Road, a staff report dated April 24, 2018, and a preliminary development plan dated April 11, 2018, planning commission recommends the governing body approve the application.
Second.
We have a motion made by Brady with a second by Gardenhire, that after review of case number PDP-1803, a preliminary development plan for the Gardner Justice Center, parcel ID CP-94510000T0E1, located at the southwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight Road, a staff report dated April 24, 2018, and a preliminary development plan dated April 11, 2018, the planning commission recommends the governing body approve the application. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Moving now to item 1B, FDP-1801, consider a final development plan for 15.247 acres.
Presentation on item 1B this evening.
Thank you. Good evening again, members of the planning commission. Michelle Cricks, planner of the city of Gardner, and this evening we'll be presenting the final development plan for the Gardner Justice Center, located at the southwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight. So here, this rendition was included in your packet, just wanted to show that to you again, and show the public what the, what the vision of the, of this Justice Center will be. And to, and I apologize, but the, you can see to the right, actually, with the rain garden and how the sidewalk will be kind of elevated through there, so provide a, a walkway from the front, from the front out to the street. So, the Gardner Justice Center will be located at the very northeast corner of the lot, and I've indicated a site area with a star located in the general location of the Justice Center. The size of the building is proposed to be 32,930 square feet, and the building will be located along, pushed up close to University Drive, but the front door will be facing Moonlight Road. Within the front door area, you can see that there's a plaza area, which will be over 4,000 square feet in size, and connected, and it'll connect by a 10-foot sidewalk to the existing bike hike trail on Moonlight, Moonlight Road. The plaza area will have landscaping, seating, and decorative pavement, and also there'll be flagpoles out front and other planters. Bicycle parking will be proposed out in the plaza area as well, and of course, we have the bioswale rain garden area for stormwater management. This, just so, for reference, the rain garden reduces the amount of water infiltrating into the stormwater systems, which helps improve quality and reduces the amount of water pollution reaching the local water sources, and is an approved form of stormwater management by Mid-America Regional Council and the American Public Works Association. This also will provide a good example for other developers to follow with environmentally stormwater managements as development continues to grow within the city of Gardner. Just south of that bioswale, we've got our visitor parking, and it is connected by the internal drive. We have the internal drive clinics to Moonlight there at the very southeast corner of the lot, goes around the south and to the west of the site, and will connect back to University Drive. We've got the public parking there, 26 spaces that'll pull out onto the, excuse me, onto the internal drive, and then from that internal drive, city staff and vehicle, vehicles can pull into the staff and police parking, and there's also an access drive to the Sally Port on the south and south side of the building. Eventually, it is anticipated in the future that that west parking lot will be a secured gated parking lot, and will be like a gated entry into both points, into that parking lot. There's also an emergency generator proposed on site, that will be located south of the Sally Port as well, within that island of that drive. So this is a copy of the elevations here in front of you, is, the overall height of the building is about 20 feet in height, and will have actually a flat roof design, but you've noticed that the architect has provided with alternating parapet heights to break up the board, so it doesn't look so flat across the top of the building, and gives a little bit of vertical articulation to the building. There's going to be multiple materials used on this building. There's going to be light gray, dark gray, and beige color, and integral colored concrete masonry units, which are, which is allowed material on buildings over 20,000 square feet in size. There's also going to be red terracotta rain screen system and black metal panels on the, on the building. The applicant is also providing screening for trash enclosure and generator, and there's a permit yard by the building, and all those materials to screen those various areas, the materials will match the building material on the, on the facade of the building. And I don't know if you've seen over here, to my right, I have provided a material board, the applicant has provided a material board, so you can get an idea of what all the materials will look like on the building. Staff finds that the overall design is compatible to the context, considering the location and relationships of the buildings in the area, which are more low in design, open spaces, natural features or site elements, and the final development plan is, is in substantial compliance with the proposed preliminary development plan. Therefore, staff is recommending the planning commission approve FDP-1801, a final development plan for the Gardner Justice Center, parcel ID CP-94510000T0E1, located at the southwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight Road, based on a staff report dated April 24, 2018, and a final development plan dated April 11, 2018, with the conditions outlined in the recommended motion, which is up in front of you for review. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Commissioners, any comments, questions? We just saw the prelim, but anything that may have came to your mind during the review of the final? And down my right?
I think the only question, or at the moment, the only question that I have is, do we really want to provide the trash enclosure within the fence? Is the trash company going to have access to the fenced area when they come to pick it up?
That's something we would have to work out with the trash company. The, we can, we can certainly look at alternate solutions. As of right now, the fence components and secure lots is being viewed as a bid alternate component to this building, as a measure for some cost reduction. So, that's a very good valid point, and we can certainly look into that a little, little more.
And then the only other question, I think, I said that was the only one, but now we'll remember to know, something to look at as you get into your final designs, or something to ask the fire department about is whether you need another fire hydrant within that future fenced area, because right now you're about 450 feet from your nearest hydrant.
That's a, that's a good, good comment, and we are in the works and have plans worked out to stub in two new hydrants. One will be on the west side, and it will stub south, and then one will be on the southeast side and stub internally to the west, so you will have two new hydrants on the site, and the potential for an internal loop to be connected for any future development that might happen to the west.
Got your questions? Questions?
So, basically, this is going to house our police department? Is that what this is all going to be, or is it going to be some other?
It'll house both police, excuse me, both police and municipal court, so court staff will eventually move over there as well.
Okay. Fire stations, where's that?
Yes. Yeah, it's all, we're county fire.
It's no longer.
Other questions?
Commissioner Austin, just on the parking lot of the trash container, I work in a building that has a security parking lot, and the trash container is in the secured lot, so they just get access. However, that ends up happening when they build this to allow them to come and deal with trash.
If it does, to get built, it would be like a proxy card at, you know, that internal, you can kind of see where those islands would be in the drive, so it would, they would have likely their own card swipe.
That makes sense. Okay. Good. Any other questions, comments? Been a good discussion tonight. If you have any, I'll entertain a motion for this.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
After review of FDP-1801, final development plan. After review of FDP-1801, final development plan for the Gardner Justice Center, parcel ID CP-9451000-T0E1, located at the southwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight Road, a staff report dated April 24, 2018, and a final development plan dated April 11, 2018. Planning Commission approves the application provided that following conditions are met: approval of preliminary development plan PDP-1803, and approval of preliminary final development plans for the Board of County Commissioners.
Sorry.
We have a motion made by Bowden with a second by Freeman, that after review of FDP-1801, a final development plan for the Gardner Justice Center, parcel ID CP-94510000-T0E1, located at the southwest corner of University Drive and Moonlight Road, a staff report dated April 24, 2018, and a final development plan dated April 11, 2018. The planning commission approves the application, provided the following conditions are met: item number one, approval of preliminary development plan PDP-1803, and item number two, approval of the preliminary and final development plans by the Board of County Commissioners. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with "all in favor." Thank you guys very much tonight for the presentation and conversation.
Thank you.
Okay. Regular agenda item number two. We've got several text amendments. We'll start with 2A. TA-1801, hold a public hearing and consider text amendments to Section 17.05.010, Table 5-1 of the Land Development Code Regarding Comprehensive Plan and Zoning Districts. Good evening, Kelly.
Good evening, Commissioners, Kelly Drake-Woodward, Chief Planner. So we are, I think, nearing the end of our anticipated amendments to the code. And I think those are customarily anticipated when you adopt a whole new code that's form-based instead of a traditional code. So it's working out some of those functional items. And then we had two new land use plans that we adopted that have impacted that land use zoning interface, so that's another complication. So what we're going to do is start with the already initiated amendments that are ready for public hearing. We're going to take them one at a time. And then we're going to move into the other amendments, which some have been initiated, some of them haven't. But mostly, we're going to just have discussion on those. And so I really need your input, so to give me some direction for what you would see at the next meeting on those. So on these first ones that are already initiated, here are your possible actions. You can recommend approval of the amendment. You can recommend that no change be made to the code. You can recommend a revised version of the amendment. And then if you do that, please state the specific section of the code and the text as amended, and we can help you with that, if you need that. You can also suggest that we take a different approach and present something new to you next time. So, so those are your choices. Starting with 1801, this one was initiated by the planning commission this year in January as part of the comprehensive plan annual review. And it's basically dealing with this table that provides a general guide for the relationship of the future land uses to the potential zoning districts. It is used when we evaluate applications for rezonings or for development for consistency with the comprehensive plan. And because we changed those future land use categories, some of the language and everything in the comp plan, now we need to update this table, because we need those documents to be consistent. So just summarizing the changes that we have proposed, the medium density residential future land use, that right now is associated with R2, R3, and R4 zoning districts, we are suggesting that you add small-scale communities in the RMP district, which is planned manufactured in mobile home communities, and that they be developed, you know, these are just the ones that would be fit in with a medium density context, basically. And how would you know that they fit in with that? Well, this would be a conditional use. So it would come to the planning commission and to the governing body, and so you would review that at that time. This change would also support more of a diversity of housing types in conformance with the policy of the comprehensive plan. The second one is just to change the name of the downtown mixed-use future land use category to core mixed-use. And that's to reflect the language that was adopted in the Main Street Corridor Plan. And it also kind of expresses better that this district has expanded to not be just the traditional downtown area, but also the neighborhoods around it and the fairgrounds as well. So it's kind of a new, new thing. But this is really new, the community mixed-use future land use. And that's, we had to have that because this was created in the vision from the Main Street Corridor Plan. We're proposing that it corresponds with basically the office, neighborhood business, and general business districts to implement that vision of that plan. It's basically would only be implemented in that study area of that plan right now. Although I think we're looking at a sub-area plan that we may adopt soon, bring before you soon, and it may also use as designation. So the next one is change the name of the light industrial and office park future land use to commercial and light industrial. And also to change the associated zoning districts. And basically, here we go. We would be taking out M2, because that's the heavy industrial. We now have a new heavy industrial future land use that that would go with, and putting in the more heavy commercial instead. And then finally, the new heavy commercial industrial future land use to corresponds with your heavy industrial zoning district. It's not called heavy industrial, I just can't remember exactly what it is, but that's what it is. I think I put this map in your packet in case we need to refer back to it for what these future land use areas are. And then in the case of the sub-area plan that's around 175th Street, this is a draft portion for that. Most of the properties that are designated for community mixed-use future land use currently appear to be zone C2. The C2 zoning district does not currently permit residential or mixed uses. We'll deal with that in one of the other amendments I've proposed in the second part of this. But anyway, this future land use description would support any of those three districts, two of which do implement mixed use. So if someone was currently zone Z2, and they want to implement mixed use, they could do that by rezoning, or if we adopt the other amendment, they could at least do a mixed use building. This is just to kind of take out all the other colors and everything, except the basic commercial districts that are already here, commercial and industrial, so that you can see the CO and the COA, which would implement mixed uses. You don't really see much blue on the map right now. So that just has never really been implemented. It's available for someone to use. But we, I think we're going to make it so that people can do that with some of these amendments, which is pretty important. So staff's recommendation is that the planning commission recommend approval of TA-1801 to the governing body, amending Section 1705.010 zoning districts and intent statements, specifically Table 5-1, comprehensive plan and zoning districts, based on the findings as presented in the staff report. And you need to have a public hearing on this item.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Kelly. We'll now open the public hearing. Any member of the public that would like to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record and be heard. Seeing as that, I don't think we're going to have anybody speaking on this item tonight, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by Brady with a second by Austin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Public hearing for item 2A is closed. Commissioners, questions on text amendment TA-1801? Anything for staff? Okay, if we don't have anything for staff, questions, comments, I'd entertain a motion on item 2A.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
At the planning commission, after review of findings in the staff report dated April 24, 2018, recommends that the governing body adopt TA-1801, TA-1801, amending Section 17.05.010 zoning districts and intent statements, and specifically Table 5-1, comprehensive plan and zoning districts of GMC title 17, Gardner Land Development Code, with changes summarized as follows. Number one, change the medium density residential future land use category to also correspond with small-scale communities in the residential manufactured and mobile home planned districts, RM-P planned districts, with the typical, with the typically applicable zoning districts to read R2, R3, R4, or small-scale communities in RM-P. Or application of P districts to these and other districts to develop more walkable neighborhoods with a mix of housing types and connection to walkable community centers. Number two, change the name of the downtown mixed-use future land use category to core mixed use, to be consistent with adopted changes to the comprehensive plan. Number three, include the new community mixed-use future land use category that was adopted as part of an amendment to the comprehensive plan, to correspond with typically applicable zoning districts, C0, CO-A, C2, or application of P districts to allow commercial in more walkable center. Number four, change the name of the light industrial and office park future land use category to commercial and light industrial, and change the typically applicable zoning districts to remove the M2 district and add the C3 district to read C0, C3, M1, or application of P district to these districts to allow campus-type environments or better integration of industrial uses into surrounding patterns. Number five, include the new heavy industrial, or heavy commercial and industrial future land use category that was adopted as part of an amendment to the comprehensive plan, to correspond with typically, typically applicable zoning districts, M2, or application of P district, to these districts to allow campus-type environments or better integration of industrial uses into surrounding patterns.
Sorry.
We have a motion made by Gardenhire with a second by Austin, that after review of findings in the staff report dated April 24, 2018, the planning commission recommends that the governing body adopt TA-1801, amending Section 17.05.010 zoning districts and intent statements, and specifically Table 5-1, comprehensive plan and zoning districts of GMC title 17, Gardner Land Development Code, with changes summarized, numbers one through five, as summarized by Gardenhire with a second by Austin. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with "all in favor." Okay. Text amendment 2B. TA-1802, hold a public hearing and consider text amendments to Section 17.09.020, Table 9-1 of the Land Development Code Regarding Access Location and Spacing. Good evening, Kelly.
Good evening. Initiated by the planning commission on October 25, 2016. Yep, it's taken us a while to get to it. With the following understanding, the Land Development Code currently requires a minimum corner separation distance of 75 feet for local roads and residential areas. Consider reducing the corner separation distance for local streets, or define as applying only to the separation distance from corners of collector and local streets, not local local streets, to be exist, consistent with existing context. And we did kind of discuss this with our LDC consultant when we initiated this. So the minimum lot widths for most low-density residential building types are 70 foot or less. Not all the lots are created 70 feet, some of them are bigger. But many lots in the city were created to this minimum standard, which makes a 75-foot separation from the curb of the intersecting street to the driveway, sometimes impractical or atypical. So for this reason, we have generally just been approving these driveways at the lesser distance, because it couldn't meet the distance. And sometimes we ask them to flip the house plan, so it will be farther from the intersection. So this is an illustration kind of what I'm talking about. These are all local, local intersections. And starting from the left, moving to the right, basically these setbacks where the yellow lines are indicated are 38, 70, 69, 68, 70, 67, 72, 67, and 42. That's from, you know, where the intersecting street curve to the nearest point of the driveway. These lots are all 85 to 95, to 90 foot wide. So they're bigger than the 70-foot lots, but they still don't meet the 75-foot separation distance. With the amendment, the minimum corner separation distance for these local, local intersections would not be specified, but we would ask for the driveway to be as far as possible from the intersection. It's another example, only this time we have a collector local intersection, and separation distances, if you start from the left, move clockwise all the way around, are 57. Then two of them are 29 feet, then you have one that's 71, 36, 58, 96, 55, 62. Minimum lot size would be 8,000, but these lots are between 10,000 and a little over 13,000 square feet. And their lot widths are anywhere from 71 feet to 148 feet. So for the intersections of those collector local streets, that 75-foot minimum separation distance would still apply with the amendment. And then for the local, local streets, it would not apply, we would just try to maximize that distance. You have any questions about how, what we're talking about? Okay. So our recommendation is that you recommend approval of TA-1802 to the governing body, amending Section 1709.020, specifically Table 9-1, access location and spacing based on the findings as presented in the staff report. Over to you.
Thank you, Kelly. We will now open the public hearing. All those wishing to speak, which looks like we've got a packed house on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record and be heard. Not seeing anybody come forward, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Sorry.
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by Bowden and I heard a second by Austin, that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Commissioners, questions, comments on 2B? Pretty straightforward.
I just wanted to clarify on the collector local intersection where it would still be applicable, but none of them in the picture were compliant. That's the intent, right?
Correct. Well, let me see. Sorry. So the collector local, the first one was 57 feet. It's not a very wide lot. But if they were planning ahead for that, you know, we would be talking to them when they created the plat, and we would say, you know, your driveways have to be this. The other ones, those would be the 55 and the 62. The other ones, those would be the 55 and the 62.
So those would just be approved exceptions to the language as they currently stand?
Yeah, then it doesn't apply then.
The goal is to meet the 75 feet off of the collector local intersections, even though we have existing.
Don't have other questions or comments? I entertain a motion on item two B.
I move that the planning commission, after review of findings in the staff report dated April 24, 2018, recommend the governing body adopt TA-18-02, amending section 17 dot 09 dot 020, specifically table 9 dash 1, access, location, and spacing of GMC title 17, Gardener Land Development Code as follows. Change the access, location, spacing standard on residential streets of a local function class from 75 feet to plus corner to read 75 feet plus corner, not applicable to intersections of local local streets, although access shall be placed to maximize separation from corner.
Second.
We have a motion made by Austin with a second by Brady that after review of findings in the staff report dated April 24, 2018, the planning commission recommends that the governing body adopt TA-18-02, amending section 17 dot 09 dot 020, specifically table 9 dash 1, access, location, and spacing of GMC title 17, Gardener Land Development Code as stated by Austin in the motion with a second by Brady. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Item, text amendment two C. TA-18-03, hold a public hearing and consider text amendments to section 17 dot 10 dot 040, table 10 dash 2 of the Land Development Code regarding sign allowances for temporary sign area on larger lots. May I leave presentation, Kelly?
Okay, this one was also initiated in October of 2016 with the understanding that the Land Development Code currently allows one square foot of freestanding temporary sign, and we're just talking about the residential agriculture and rec districts, per each five linear feet of street frontage with a nine square feet per sign maximum. So under consideration here is increasing the maximum size limit for those signs for lots that are five acres or more in those districts. So that would be increasing the maximum size to 24 square feet to provide for customary and contextual marketing opportunity. This would apply to any temporary sign in those districts for those larger lots. So for example, if you had a 70 foot wide lot, which is typically less than a quarter acre, the total area allowance would be 70 divided by five or 14 square feet, but you couldn't have any one sign that exceeded nine square feet. And the example that's shown here is a 42 acre parcel with 512 feet of frontage. And so they would be able to have a total of 102.4 square foot of signage, temporary signage. And with the amendment, each of those, they could have them 24 square foot max instead of nine. So we all on the same page with that? Okay. We recommend that, the planning commission recommend approval of TA 1803 to the governing body, amending section 17 10 oh 4 oh, specifically table 10 dash 2, sign allowances based on the findings as presented in the staff report.
Great, thank you, Kelly. We will now open the public hearing. Those wishing to speak on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record and be heard. Seeing nobody come forward to make comments this evening, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion made by Austin with a second by Bowden that we close the public hearing. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Questions, comments from the commission on this item? We don't have anything. I would entertain a motion on item two C.
The planning commission, after review of findings in staff report dated April 24, 2018, recommends that the governing body adopt TA-18-03, amending section 17 dot 10 dot 040, specifically table 10 dash 2, sign allowances of GMC title 17, Gardener Land Development Code as follows. Item one, for temporary signs in the residential agricultural and REC districts, change the size standard from size nine square feet per sign maximum to read size nine square feet per maximum, 25 square feet for lots five acres or more.
25?
Oh. That's what I said. No, 24. Sorry. For five acres or larger.
Second.
So we have a motion made by Freeman with a second by Austin. Then after review of findings in the staff report dated April 24, 2018, the planning commission recommends that the governing body adopt TA-18-03, amending section 17 dot 10 dot 040, specifically table 10 dash 2, sign allowances of GMC title 17, Gardener Land Development Code as stated and amended by Freeman with a second by Austin in the motion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Okay, two D. TA-18-04, hold a public hearing and consider text amendments to section 17 dot 10 dot 060, E dot 3 of the Land Development Code regarding temporary sign standards for non-rigid materials. Kelly, we have a presentation on this one.
Right. Currently that section reads, temporary signs shall be constructed of rigid material and securely anchored so as not to pose a distraction or hazard to drivers. Non-rigid materials such as banners, which are secured by a support or frame to avoid distraction of flapping, may be used as freestanding temporary sign if setback at least 30 feet from the pavement edge of the fronting roadway. If you read it carefully, you may construe that to mean that banners can't be used for temporary wall signs, which is not our intent. So we're just clearing up that misperception and providing clear options for properly securing non-rigid freestanding signs.
Great, thanks, Kelly. We will now open the public hearing. All those wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address for the public record. With nobody coming forward to speak on this item tonight, I would entertain closing the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing made by Bowden with a second by Freeman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Questions, comments, commissioners, anything for staff tonight?
I have one item here. And if we look at the second highlight in red where it mentions the wall or freestanding, I wonder if that needs to be in there at all. It should, maybe it should just read flapping may be used as a temporary sign if setback. Honestly, when I read this the first time, I was like, why is somebody using a banner as a wall? And so I read it and interpreted it not even as a sign. I don't know if we needed to describe it as a wall or free signing. At that point, it's just a temporary sign. If we're complicating it more than we have to do.
You do that? People sometimes do put them on walls because they don't, well, want to put them on.
Right, but above, we have stated that they can securely mount them on a wall. So we already have, we've already said that they can use the wall.
Right.
So there's the redundancy built in then. To me, it was confusing when I read it the first time.
Okay.
Maybe I'm the only one that gets that kind of confused.
Any other questions? I don't think we have any other questions, so I entertain a motion on this item.
The planning commission, after review of findings in the staff report dated April 24, 2018, recommends that the governing body adopt TA-18-04, amending section 17 dot 10 dot 060, E dot 3 of GMC title 17, Gardener Land Development Code to read 3. Temporary signs shall be constructed of rigid material and securely anchored so as not to pose a distraction or hazard to drivers. Non-rigid materials such as banners, which are securely mounted on a wall, rigid backing material, or completely framed without sagging or flapping, may be used as a temporary sign if setback at least 30 feet from the pavement edge of the fronting roadway.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Freeman with a second by Austin that after review of findings in the staff report dated April 24, 2018, the planning commission recommends that the governing body adopt TA-18-04, amending section 17 dot 10 dot 060, E 3, E dot 3 of GMC title 17, Gardener Land Development Code to read 3. Temporary signs shall be constructed of rigid material and securely anchored so as not to pose a distraction or hazard to drivers. Non-rigid materials such as banners, which are securely mounted on a wall, rigid backing material, or completely framed without sagging or flapping, may be used as a freestanding temporary sign if setback at least 30 feet from the pavement edge of the fronting roadway.
We removed the word freestanding. So it's just.
Oh.
Used as a free, as a temporary sign if setback.
Oh, you, okay, sorry.
Remove both of those.
You removed the freestanding as well. I was trying to pay attention to you, okay. I amended that as Freeman stated with the second by Austin. Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor. Thank you, that one got me really confused. Okay. Last one, kids. Two E. Consider initiation of text amendments to the Land Development Code. All right, Kelly.
Okay, this one has five parts.
Okay.
And I'm hoping you're going to work hard on these so I know exactly what to do. Okay, so I'm asking you to discuss them and provide direction, and then requesting the initiation of the last three. And I'll point that out to you when you get there. So your alternate actions are initiate or don't initiate. And when you initiate them, that doesn't necessarily mean you have to adopt something or amend something later. Okay, so this first one was initiated by city council in February this year. Staff interprets this council direction as being oriented towards addressing particular areas near the existing I-35 interchanges and possibly a potential future interchange at I-35 and Moonlight Road. And I tried to kind of highlight those areas that I think they're most interested in by kind of shading out everything else. I'm not saying this has to be the area of any district, but I think that's what they might be talking about. Council discussions indicate a particular concern for development that is visible from I-35, perhaps along a frontage road or other major roadways. And this sets the impression or tone for the community. So all the, although the future land use plans and the subarea plans do provide direction for future land uses, the plans do not guarantee that a mix of uses are going to occur with development. For example, it would be possible to zone large areas to accommodate warehouses or logistics type uses without a beneficial mix of neighborhood and regional serving community support uses. So the use provisions of the Land Development Code currently only enable, but do not mandate, the mix of uses. So the idea is, do you think it's advisable to create a planned overlay district specifically addressing these interchanged areas? And those would be subject to the underlying zoning district provisions, whatever they are, and also the overlay district provisions. So there are different ways that you can do this. You can guarantee a mix of uses per project or site, specifying a particular number of different uses or a ratio of different uses, such as examples that are shown here. The benefits of this, it's pretty straightforward. People can read it, they know what they got to do with the development. They can plan ahead and have fewer delays with approvals. The challenges are that developers and investors may need to have some expertise and experience in a mix of product types. And they may not be able to specialize in something that they're used to doing, or they might need to partner with someone new in order to get that mix of uses in their project. Or you can apply that mandatory mix of uses over a larger area, say a block or whole district. And so the benefits there, you allow people to continue to specialize in their product type. And then if they're really wanting to do something in particular and they were kind of waiting, they may decide to go ahead because they want to get in there and take advantage of the percent, you know, before it's gone, the opportunity's gone. Challenges, this may delay development on the remaining parcels if the market demand is not as high for those other uses. So you can also do this by providing incentives for preferred development. And usually, that comes about through density or intensity bonuses. It's a very content tech-specific decision. So you would have less certainty with that because you would ask questions like, is the infrastructure going to support this increased density? How about the environmental conditions would that support it? Is the added density in context with the neighborhood wherever they're wanting to do it? And is this enough of incentive to make that happen? So those are just some of the considerations that I could think of. I would like your input on these questions. I don't know if you want to handle them one at a time? And if anybody has anything to say, or?
No, we can just, just, yeah. I mean, I guess one at a time, we can just pretty much, we're good commissioners here. We don't talk over each other. So we can just kind of start with the discussion on, I guess, maybe question one and move on down. Find that if anyone's got input.
I think, I mean, I understand the governing body's direction, but frankly, as I read this, this is a classic example of putting the cart before the horse. We're an overlay district for planned development when we have no developers or anything else. I almost feel like we're closing doors instead of opening them. And I'm, I'm not sure that is the planning commission. That's the right direction to go, I don't know. Is if we look at the options we consider with anyone who said, let's look at this particular corner, it would be a great place for medical development. Yet where do we, where do we have the development down south? There's medical development. So I think it closes doors more than it opens. And I don't, I just think we're getting ahead of ourselves, and I don't see the benefit to the overlay.
Okay.
I tend to agree, I think, by mandating the mix of these occupancies, and I could be wrong, I guess. But the way that I see it, if you mandate a mix of occupancies, you're essentially guaranteeing yourself of having empty lots because the developer's going to develop what the market's demanding right now. And if the market's not demanding what we're mandating in those other lots, then they aren't going to build those until the market tries for it. That's my.
Our agenda's full of requests for exceptions. They didn't notice.
Also, yeah, I mean, true.
We'll accommodate developers in most cases, if it's sound development, so.
Right, and that's what I was going to bring up. Like, I think that a developer's going to come forth with a plan. It doesn't matter what we overlay. They're going to say, here's my plan. You overlay this, can we get a bunch of exceptions? So that's, I mean, at best, we're doing work for nothing. At worst, we're closing doors.
Go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, they said everything that I was thinking. Because it was a meeting. I think you guys were scared.
I was a preacher, you know, do that, that's why I skipped.
Timmy, you want to add anything? Okay, I'm, I agree with my fellow commissioners here. I feel like we are putting the cart before the horse and trying to close doors instead of open them. So I think we have.
Do we need to make a motion not to initiate?
Do we need to, yeah.
So they already initiated it, so.
We're just discussing.
If you're ready right now to make a recommendation to them, then yes, you need to make a motion.
Okay. But Larry wants to weigh in.
Point of order.
Yes.
So this is brought to you because you have a city council that is looking at a large tract of land or tracts of land around two and one future intersection that if a developer brought to you a single use purpose for 300 or 400 acres. a developer brought to you a single-use purpose for three or four hundred acres, would you want that? And their hope was, is that they see a higher level use than mixed, or than single-use logistics park property, for example. They think that intersections are special, you'd only have two or three of them off your foreland, and therefore they deserve additional protection and consideration over and above the fact that you may be placing some limitations of use on them. They understand the limitation of use aspect very well that you verbalized, but they're looking at it from the aspect of, we would like to see commercial development in this particular area, and if the owner of the property comes in and says, I wanna put it all in something else, cargo container property, for example, nothing stops them from doing that.
But sorry...
So this was an effort on their part to think about the opportunity to at least set aside some of the property as is developed for different uses. So that's the crux of the argument that they're looking at. They don't deny anything that you have said, because they have said much the same thing themselves. But they thought that it would be an opportunity to at least consider a different method of looking at these particular rather unique intersections that we have control of or partial control of right now. The only one, we really only partially control right now is Garden Road, and a little bit of the north side of one hundred and seventy-fifth Street, and some of the north side of what might be an intersection futuristically on Moonlight Road. And those will be the only three that you'll probably have unless, for some reason, Claire would were to develop it as an intersection at some point in the future, which is pretty doubtful, but it could, it's possible. So that's the only thing I wanted to raise to you, what their thinking was and how it was expressed to us to be brought to you in this format for your consideration. So it's not just the fact that they don't recognize the limitations of an overview or an overlay district, but the fact that that district does at least give the developer some pause to consider what the city would like to see in some kind of a mixed-use development.
And just to correct what I said, we didn't publish for a public hearing, so it has come back to you again for whatever action you officially take to recommend or not recommend.
So with those comments in mind, it's, you make a good point, Larry. I think, in my opinion, and thinking about it as the citizen and what I can envision other citizens coming back to the council with is, if we mandate these mixed uses and essentially guarantee empty lots, then we're pressing towards, we're making a decision not to accept the potential tax revenue and other revenues of a potential development on a site. So if a developer wants to develop, you know, ten buildings of X type, and we say you can only develop five buildings of X type, the other ones had to be Y and Z type, then the revenue that the city would gain from the Y and Z type lots is lost until such time as the market says, okay, it's time to build these. So I would think that maybe the better approach, if, you know, we truly want to try to control what happens in those areas, would be more along the lines of the incentive approach of approaching developers and saying, hey, we wanna develop something here, we have this vision in mind, will you work with us to develop it? And I don't know what the incentives are, I don't necessarily think that we as a planning commission go down that road. But I would prefer to see that type of an approach over mandating that they can't do one thing or another.
Larry, you brought up another really good point, though, in about the overlays at these intersections, how little of those land on either side that we actually do control. So we're only overlaying in parts, we're looking at these as a district as a whole in hopes that annexation goes in the way that our plans are, but at this point, we are, if we look at the corner of Garden Road, we have, what, two corners of that? If we look at it four, so we've got three. So we've got the fourth one that might not even fit with what those plans are if they decide annex into Exeter Lake or State Uncoordinated. So then does it defeat the purpose if we're not able to lay the overlay off all four corners? I don't know, that's just following up on what you said there, we, because if we go to the north exit, it's only one corner that's, that we have right now.
North end.
Which one?
Of one hundred and seventy-fifth Street.
Yeah.
We would be on everything, if you look at the picture, everything that's inside the dotted line is inside the city limits.
Gotcha. It's a little bit more than maybe I...
Well, not, it's only the black dotted line.
The black dotted line.
Right.
And that's just at that intersection, that's the example there's. But I don't disagree with you. Just, but the counterpoint, Brad, is that if they were to go all logistics park and use IRBs, you don't have the option to have that income, period, whereas if you say fifty percent of it needs to be commercial, commercial traffic doesn't get trapped, property tax abatement. So you would be forcing them to, in other words, pay taxes they wouldn't be paying if it was all the other item. So it can go either way as far as the tax, property tax is concerned, and I think you're correct, you're certainly, you're certainly forcing someone to consider what they really want to do and where they wanna put their money. So I mean, I see both sides of the argument, I just didn't want us to just have all discussion on one side of the coin without at least recognizing what the other side is. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, for sure.
Did I understand you correctly that the logistics development would not pay property taxes?
If they use industrial revenue bonds, they negotiate a pilot payment in lieu of taxes, which is generally equal to the existing mill levy plus the state law changed in July of last year that requires the eight mil capital outlay tax be collected as any specials. So those are required payments, no matter how much abatement is given to them by the IRB going from ag to something fully built out. So you're going to, you're gonna pick up your specials, which are required by state law, you're gonna pick up the eight mils of capital, which is required by state law, and we generally try and maintain all the existing property tax levels at whatever the base ag level is, so that schools, fire department, library at least maintain whatever that minimum payment was during the timeframe of additional abatement.
So as I take it, what you're seeing, what you're saying, the city council's basically saying is, by doing this, maybe we don't have the entrance to our city be a bunch of warehouses.
That's a concern, yes. But again, it only applies as Commissioner Heath, Councilman Heath, Commissioner Freeman, thank you.
We could be informal, we're friends.
As stated, if it's outside the city limits, the overlay wouldn't apply.
Wouldn't apply at all, so. I think the other cause, so as we look at what we have on screen now, is if we go to item two, we are literally going to be throwing darts at a board to see what these ratios are. It's a fruitless endeavor, frankly, because the first one that comes up and says, I've got a great idea, but it's ninety, ten, that is a great idea, thanks for bringing that up, forget what I said earlier. So I just think item two is, you know, we are, you can try to be overly proactive, but this is reactive endeavor with someone that comes to the table and says, here's what I have in mind. And we do have tools with the other ways that we have in place with the Land Development Code, other means of approval to determine what's appropriate, that I don't know that the planned district really reinforces that anymore than the things that we already have in place that protects us even at that point, too. Is that fair to say? I mean, that's...
Yeah, I don't disagree.
Okay. So I don't know that changed my opinion, I think, I'm glad that you did bring that up, because I, we hear the council's thoughts, but I think I feel the same way that staff could be, dedicate their time, resources in a better fashion.
General consensus from the commissioners here? Moving on?
Do we need to, that's the one point of order, how do we, what do we do? Do we just say, no, we aren't going to, or...
Are you in agreement?
Is it just discussion at this point, and you can take that back and say the same thing?
So the discussion is you would like staff to focus more on the incentive approach than these other possible approaches, or just...
My approach was to stop after one with the answer being no. That was my suggestion. What I mean is that, I don't want it to be any gray area in there. I don't think we need an overlay at this point.
No, it's too, yeah, it seems like it's just too early at this stage of the game, based on, you know, we don't have all the land surrounding all of the interchanges, we've got some protections already in place, we don't really, you know, Heath, you made a really good point, it is like throwing darts at a dartboard when it comes to item two. How can we even, you know, know what the mix of uses are? You know, we don't wanna be shutting doors on something prematurely. It seems like we're too, we're too early for this type of a district, is kinda that it seems like the consensus from the commissioners. Too early for this type of initiation on a text amendment.
So I think then what we have to do is express those thoughts, that your recommendation back to them from their initiation is, is not beneficial at this time to create this special planned district, but we'd have a public hearing on it at the next meeting for people to have the opportunity to speak to you about it, so.
Yeah.
And then if you change your mind, we can always have another public hearing on whatever you wanna do differently. Is that good, Larry?
Yeah.
Sounds fair. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next one, potentially, well, this one we're calling TA eighteen oh six, initiated by the planning commission in October two thousand and sixteen. The code resources tree list in Appendix C does not provide a species guide for medium trees, so back when we initiated it, we proposed to provide a tree list for medium trees as permitted in the code and consider adding it to Appendix C. However, as we talked it over with our resident landscape architect, Kristy Hattley, and she went through that tree list, she proposed a different approach, which is basically not to amend that Appendix C, which is a standalone document that was provided to us by some consultants that's used in other places, but to change the footnote to Table One as it shows there in red. So we'd still have that footnote there, but it would continue on to say, although Appendix C does not offer a list of medium trees, it should be understood that trees expected to mature to a specific range that she's gonna help us come up with in height and a specific range in spread could, you know, based on anticipated growth patterns and planting context, may be considered as medium trees, and then provide some examples. So as she went through the list, she's saying, well, this could be a medium tree if this or this, you know, and so that's where we kinda came up with that approach. So we just need your input on this planned approach that we can bring back to you at the next meeting.
I would add the word be between can and considered, other than that, I think it's great.
Can you say that again?
Add the word be.
Can be considered.
Can and considered.
Okay.
Pretty straightforward, and the other commissioners wanna weigh in? I think you've got a good plan to move forward with this one, Kelly.
Okay, consensus, consensus here?
I also agree with your point of not editing somebody else's document. The approach you found is a good approach.
Great.
Sure as well.
Okay, great.
Okay, all right, I think we're good there. What's next?
Okay, this one's a little more involved, but basically, I provided you with the table, it's got these different columns, we have the future land uses on the left, we have the zoning districts next to them, and then we have all the permitted uses next to that. So previously, we discussed comprehensive plan amendments, which amended the first column. Then tonight, previously, we discussed amendments that affect the zoning districts that are in column two. Now we're talking about amendments to the remaining columns, which are the permitted uses. So here's an example of such table. So this one is just for the central business district, and the only changes that we're proposing are those items in red. So this would be adding additional conditional uses, and what we need from you tonight is, yes, you know, we think you should add these uses, and we'll have a public hearing on it later. Food and beverage heavy, you have a description on page five of your staff report, but basically, you know, maybe brewery, tasting room, that kinda thing, which we were thinking could be appropriate as a downtown anchor or a destination to create some community vitality. So central business district, right now, most of the properties that are actually zoned that are just in basically a two-block area, but if people wanna rezone to see one in that larger area that is the core mixed use, they could certainly do that, and then these would be the uses that would apply. Also, expanding the opportunity for general office to support local businesses downtown and also residential development downtown. And also then addressing the recreation, entertainment, all the different ones, indoor major, outdoor minor, and outdoor major as conditional uses, descriptions on pages five to six. So basically, this is because we have fairgrounds in this area, and, you know, we want to make sure that it's clear that you can have those kinda uses in this district where we've planned for this. So you might be thinking, well, I wouldn't want every kind of recreation, entertainment event to happen in the central business district, and if you don't, you know, it's gonna come to you as a conditional use application, you can discuss the, whether it's complimentary or appropriate, or there's externalities involved and approve or not approve, but this is just, offering this as a possible use. Also adding food and beverage accessory drive-through, description on page six. And so that use comes with standards that are specific to it that address vehicular and pedestrian access, location of the drive-through, screening, building design, vehicular stacking, noise, lighting, things like that. So we're confident that that can also be a complimentary use in this district. So maybe it's best to just ask you after each of these, what are your thoughts?
I mean, the only one, the recreation outdoor minor, that lists golf course, and, I mean, if you got an eighteen-hole golf course, I don't know, we should consider that an outdoor major.
Well, so what you're talking about is, would we amend the description for that land use to not include golf courses? And I think the reason it's an outdoor minor, it's a pretty quiet passive kinda opportunity, it doesn't create a lot of noise or, you know, traffic generally, people just kinda come and go, and so we felt when we created the code that it was a minor impact, even as a major big thing.
Okay, I was thinking more about the size, but you're talking more about the impact.
When you say doesn't create a lot of noise or impact, you don't golf with my friends?
That's true. I'm not a golfer.
Other than that, I didn't see anything, I mean, we're gonna be, courts changed.
Okay, we're okay with that? Okay, the next one is the office district, this would be adding convenience store fuel station limited, those are small stations, fueling stations, and it was thought that this would be beneficial in an office complex, you have a lot of people working there possibly, and they might wanna get gas before they head home or they come in, kind of a convenience item. And it does come with additional standards that prohibit car washes and vehicular sales, so it's the most minor of those uses. So it's a, it's the most minor of those uses. Again, the food and beverage heavy, it was thought that maybe, you know, they would be able to share parking with the office uses that would be open during the day, and then maybe this use would be more busy in the evening hours. Lodging in and small, a lot of times you do find, you know, hotels or motels close to office complexes. And then expanding that office general, just allow more office in the office district, I'm not sure why we didn't do that before. And then possibly considering the recreation, entertainment, indoor major and outdoor minor as a complimentary amenity in an office district or complex. So those would all be permitted or permitted with additional conditions. And then the additional conditional uses, which would be planning commission and governing body review, would be the personal storage indoor and commercial storage indoor. And basically, that's because most of those activities all happens indoors, it's pretty low impact also, maybe they need to store documents from their offices in storage, and it would be close by, that was our thoughts there. And then additional accessory uses, potentially the accessory drive-through again, and then the accessory outdoor, where you'd have outdoor seating areas at a restaurant for, you know, say, say new century, envision something there, so.
I really don't know why we would allow fuel station in one of these places as I look at this. From the safety hazard, I mean, all those things that I think about, I'm not sure. I understand if someone wants to have a convenience, retail-type situation, but the fuel aspect built into our, our CO just doesn't seem appropriate to me.
You don't think so?
Yeah, it would let us be.
Yeah.
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 One more.
Sure.
Other than office general, I think that was probably the one that didn't bother me the most. The, I guess, questions I have on adding heavy to food and beverage, if our general has additional conditions, shouldn't our heavy have additional conditions? I feel like I asked about why we didn't have office general in this office district previously, but I don't remember the answer, so I'm okay with adding that back in.
Yeah, we could definitely look at what those would be, and try to bring something forward.
The recreation, I think I could be okay with those. I struggle a little bit with the storage. While I understand that it'd be convenient to be able to store office documents and such next door, those types of buildings are often much different than office-type buildings, and their usage is different, their, their, their patterns of visitation than people coming in and out and trying to move and unload and haul any number of items in and out of there. I don't think that fits with the office district personality, so to speak. So I probably would be opposed to adding those. The lodging, I'll just have to think about that one a little bit and see what in small entail, and think about how those would fit into an office district. Oh, and on the conditional, well, I already said I don't necessarily think we ought to add the storage, but on the conditional uses, everything else has additional requirements associated with it. Is the intent that everything in a conditional use has additional requirements associated to the asterisk?
Not necessarily, there's like, I don't know, nine or something review criteria that applies to every single conditional use, and addresses a lot of these things, but if there is something additional specific to those uses that we're worried about, then we would create those additional standard. Sometimes I just, I'm thinking, I can't think of anything additional, you know, that we'd want to worry about, so. Definitely, you know, if we leave them in there, you could, you know, think about it and provide me with an email that says, "Okay, maybe we want to read the review criteria for conditional uses, and in addition to that, I'm worried about this." And then I could come up with something. But I'd like to have some consensus from the group on what to bring forward for the public hearing.
Yeah, I guess, so we've got a couple of call-outs here, want to make sure you guys have-
I don't have a problem with how it's down, and I don't have a lot of problem with the station either. It's hard to find a one-to-four station, gas station anymore in this region, but I think it all works, it's icy.
Okay, all right. Brad, do you have anything to add, Joe?
No, except that I do, I am seeing more and more convenient stores in office districts. I came across a 7-Eleven, even at business, this is maybe just a bad business model, but there was a 7-Eleven with no gas pumps in the middle of an office complex, and I was like, "What? A 7-Eleven with no gas pumps?" Not that I advocate them, but I don't have a problem with any of this.
All right, I think generally, we're, we're good with this, Kelly, and appreciate you, you know, leaving the door open for the commissioners, and just think of something, you know, else, along with like the review criteria, you know, feel free to send Kelly or anyone on staff an email. I, I think we're good for now, Kelly, and we'll-
Okay, and so when it comes back to you, you know, I'll have a personal, I'll bring it back just like this.
Okay.
Unless you tell me different, and you can always amend it at that time, too.
Right.
So, want to give it some more thought?
So, while I'm not wanting storage in my business in the office district.
I want the fence.
Yeah, it's a, you know, good point, Brad, that Kelly made, I mean, we'll definitely have, you know, public, public hearing and the input, you know, and we can change that. I think this is just maybe a, seems general consensus, we've got a good starting point to get the conversation started.
Okay.
Okay, all right, we're good there, what do you have first, next?
You have business, this one's pretty easy, just adding office general, which is a little bit bigger than our smallest office use, as a conditional use. These are small centers that can be integrated close to neighborhoods, so just keep that in mind.
Okay. Good with that one?
Okay. There's a few changes that we've recommended for the general business district or the C2 district, and one of the most important one is adding the mixed-use building type, because that would be the only way that you have mixed use if you're already zoned C2. And I think it would be appropriate with the other uses that are there. You wouldn't be able to have strictly residential, but you could have a mixed-use building with commercial and residential. And then as adding, again, the commercial storage indoor and mixed use as permitted uses, conditional uses would be recreation, entertainment, outdoor major, and then the manufacturing light. We didn't think there'd be very much exterior impact, any more than any of these other things.
Comments? General consensus here on that one, Kelly, looks good.
Okay. Heavy commercial district, just adding commercial storage indoor, we already have outdoor minor there, I don't know why we didn't have indoor, so. Okay, and for the restricted industrial district, this is kind of weird, too, we had retail, we allowed micro neighborhoods, small and large, but we skipped general, and we don't allow warehouse. Now, you may not think that warehouse would be appropriate in a light industrial district, that's something, you know, I'd like you to confirm or not. Do you want to allow every kind of retail in the restricted industrial district, or, now, keep in mind, they have to use these building types. And, you know, the only one that's not really limited in size is like the large commercial building type, but that's what I mainly need input on, is allowing a retail warehouse, which is a large-
Is that what it says?
If we allow only four foot on street side.
Yeah.
Unless it's six foot from the right-of-way, then we allow the six-foot privacy fence.
On the street side, decorated. Gotcha. So I probably find that's written.
It is extremely confusing.
It's a little tricky.
I think that's what I gathered out of it, it's fine, it's written, out of this whole discussion. Is that the consensus we're giving to Cal?
Yeah, we're basically stating, I think the only change really is that decorative is not included chain link. Or the other question is, do you want chain link to go up to six feet?
Six feet.
Because right now, decorative's not set out, so it could be chain link, so.
But then below, though, it's still limited to chain link to four.
Correct. So we'd be wanting six, I don't think we want to exclude chain links from decorating.
Yeah, I think if we're going to say that it shall be limited to decorative or ornamental fencing, then we should probably define what decorative or ornamental fencing is somewhere within the standard.
I think absolutely, we're just, if we go with that, yeah, I, we have to have a definition of what that entails, or examples of.
So you would think a, a typical dog-eared privacy fence is decorative or no?
I would, yeah, I mean, there's going to be some fencing standards out there as far as that, that we should be able to tap into, but I don't think a chain link fence is decorative fence in any way.
Not chain link, but yes, obviously aluminum fence, or vinyl fence, or-
Vinyl.
Vinyl siding, those, I mean.
I don't know. Yeah, it all comes down to person, purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, they're usually falling down, you know, right? That's a different issue.
Give you enough feedback, Kelly?
I think so, but you need to initiate it.
Yes, we do.
Motion to support the initiation of text amendment TA-18-09 to Title 17 Land Development Code of the Gardner Municipal Code pertaining to section 17.08.040B, fencing to address issues as summarized in April 24, 2018 staff report as consistent with subsequent discussion.
Sorry.
The motion made by Bowden with a second by Freeman, to support the initiation of text amendment TA-18-09 to Title 17 Land Development Code of the Gardner Municipal Code pertaining to section 17.08.040B fencing, to address issues as summarized in the April 24, 2018 staff report, as consistent with subsequent discussion.
Isn't it allowed to ask a question before the, before the motion is taken? Do we, do we need to call out the section that has all our definitions in it, if we wanted you to add a definition?
I would think that we could just define it in this section and not, it's, I don't think it would make too much sense to have that defined in our definition section, because that's just for terms of art. Yeah, I think we can do it here.
Thank you, Karen.
Yeah, absolutely, okay, so we have the, the motion on the floor. So all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with all in favor.
Thank you for all your hard work and patience.
Yes, thank you very much, Kelly.
Where are we at on this? We close to being done.
Yes, you are. Yeah, I don't think that we had any other outstanding issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, things come up, like artificial, we had a question about artificial turf, what the heck do we do with that, you know?
Frankly, it's, it's a living document, so you will continuously see text amendments, and this is pretty typical for a new code. My previous job, we, I was there when we adopted a new code, and we had them in larger chunks than this for a couple of years, so.
Okay, we have any, anything else for staff tonight, or anything from staff for us?
I'll just say, I'll, that's it for me, I'm out. But, so, I just appreciate, no, thank you, it's always been a great three years, but most importantly, I appreciate the staff, they do all the heavy lifting, so the work that you guys do to get to our meetings is very much underappreciated, so thank you for that, and I'll certainly miss you next Tuesday, but not by much.
So, good point, Heath, I'm going to have to echo you as well, this is my last meeting. I've enjoyed it, and thank you, staff and commissioners, it's been a fun, fun ride.
Thank you for your service, both of you.
Absolutely. So with that, I will entertain the motion to adjourn. Wait, you got something else?
I was going to say, I assume next meeting you'll start it, and we'll have elections, or?
All right.
Second.
Thank you, Heath. We have a motion to adjourn made by Bowden with a second by Freeman. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries, meetings adjourned, my fun people.